All right, we'll go ahead and call to order the Ford County Commission meeting. This is meeting 2022-09. And first up, we have a prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. And the prayer is by Captain Roberto Di Vala of San Francisco.
Dear fathers, we come here today to acknowledge who you are, Lord, for governor and sustainer, and our God. We want to thank you for a wonderful reminder of celebration which is ahead in Easter about the resurrection, which brings us hope in each of our hearts, Lord, in the future. Lord, I pray for knowledge and wisdom as each one here goes about bettering the community. There's so many complicated things that need to be discussed and to make decisions, Lord. And I pray, Lord, that give them the wisdom to make those decisions according to their will. Bless them, Lord, and bless our communities in Jesus' name.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so the first is the consent agenda, which has the approval of meeting minutes 2022-08, approval of additions and abatements. It's a pretty short one.
It's a pretty substantial additions and abatements, though, right?
Want to go over those?
I do want to go over those.
Okay, these are, well, Haskel hearing came off because they were three years. Actually, there was two when they started way back in March of 2020. COVID hit, the work was shut down. Otherwise, we were scheduled right in the middle, like April when COVID hit. We were scheduled to go to hearings, so then they got behind. So that's the reason it's so late coming in. Otherwise, I would have been here probably in the middle and tell you this. So we worked with them. So then, when it got so late in 2020, 2021 is already over. Our tax attorney and their tax rep talked and said, hey, do I have to file and go through all this whole process again to do these? So then we went ahead and did that one. We're allowed to do that. That's totally we can. So that's the reason we have three years, so that we don't have to come back and spend all the costs, go to the court, do all the, it's just a lot of time. So they did that. So those three years. So that's 2019 for two different entities.
Okay.
Two of them, the same ones for each year they did. So that's what they were.
Okay. Do we have any more of these hanging out there, Stowe, Patty?
Yes, actually, Monday, we have two more. We're going to Topeka for. We have two more that were scheduled in Moda that we'll have. And those two, so.
Comparable in size?
No, they're the local ones, in Sberro.
Okay.
So we got those, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
All right, with the motion seconded, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up is approval for claims for payment. This is the amount of $322,611, $611.12.
And make a motion to approve the claims for payment as presented.
And I'll second that. With the motion seconded, any further discussion? Hearing done, I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Claims passes. Okay, so now we're at the part for open public comment. This is the part of the meeting where anybody can come up and use a microphone and address the commission. Please limit to five minutes per individual, 15 minutes per topic. Final, actually may be deferred until the next commission meeting unless an emergency situation does arise. So the microphone is open if anybody would like to come forward or if anybody wants to discuss anything. We have two.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'd like to let you know that Mr. Haskel has become a KCM or Kansas Certified Emergency Manager.
Okay.
So he's just role with trainees and everything, so he has met the rank.
Congratulations. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. The first up is information technology phase three. This item was tabled from meeting a few ago.
Apollo guys, we're taking so long. Took a while to wait on the vendor to get us to review what our requirements were. And they finally did. Got that send order to Curbs. And we now have it here to present back to you. This is for phase three of the physical security for the government center. These were doors that were identified by maintenance that needed to be addressed. That's what we're presenting to you to move forward with at this time.
Okay. Marty, do they, do they perform the entire job or is somebody in your team hands on?
They provide the entire installation and the setup and licenses. Once a month, we do a complete walkthrough with both Dawn and the word is app that he identifies as well as our technicians.
Okay.
So that way, we can support it from that point forward.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the quote from Next Tech for the third phase of the Ford County Physical Security Project as presented.
I second that motion.
All right, with the motion seconded, any discussion on this? You have timeframe for this installation?
Probably within 60 days, they can get it completed. Matter of getting on their schedule once we get this approved, so.
All right, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next up is legal counsel. A resolution to continue an account in municipal investment.
Yes. Good afternoon.
All right, leave. Go ahead.
We've been down this road just not too long ago. And so we're looking at three resolutions that have to do with the treasurer's office with the appointment of Courtney as the Ford County Treasurer. We've had to make some changes to these resolutions. Those are the only changes that have been made is to correct her title from deputy county treasurer to county treasurer. So 2022-15 is the municipal investment pool continuance of that account.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt resolution number 2022-15.
I'll second that.
Hold on, I'm sorry. I've got something wrong here.
I should be in a legal counsel.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see what I did wrong. Got you. Yep, here we go. I was looking at the wrong one. Sorry.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for resolution 2022-15, which is a resolution to continue the account in the municipal investment pool. I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Resolution 2022-16 is a resolution designating Landmark National Bank as the, as an official depository bank for funds of Ford County.
This one again is just name change?
Correct.
Okay. I make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-16.
I'll second.
I second that motion.
Resolution 2022-17.
Hang on one second, I'll go ahead and call a vote on this one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I figured it'd be quick since you had two seconds.
2022-17 is a resolution designating all of the official depositories for funds of Ford County. On this one, there is a change in section one. Corrected the current name of the bank in Buckland GN Bank, which was, used to be Buckland National Bank GNB, I think. And so just corrected the name of the bank that they currently use. And then also to reflect Courtney as the Ford County Treasurer.
Okay.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-17.
I second it.
All right, with the motion seconded, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
All right, and Mr. Chairman, we have a certification for you to sign to Landmark National Bank.
Okay.
The requiring for approval.
Thank you. All right, thank you. And at this point, it looks like we move on to the county administrator's report.
First item is emergency management. A resolution to declare a local disaster.
Yeah, good afternoon, gentlemen.
Here, Rex.
I'd like to have you sign the disaster declaration from last week for the wildfires.
Okay. Did this go into Ford County? Was this in Ford County?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is going to be a resolution also. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt resolution number 2022-18 as requested by the emergency manager, Rex Beamer.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion second for the disaster declaration. I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item we have is fire EMS, burn ban.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Rob.
We've held off about as long as a year or two, I think. We kept thinking we were going to get somewhere in, and we just weren't yet. Kansas Forest Service is saying it should very well be like this until August.
Okay.
So unfortunately, it's kind of over in.
Lots of resolutions today. I make a motion to adopt resolution number 2022-19 declaring a burn ban in the county as requested by Fire Chief Boyd.
I would second that motion.
All right, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right.
Next item we have is fire EMS, Western Kansas Multi-County Task Force. You got this one, Kyle?
Yep. We were approached by Garden City Fire Department here quite a few months ago about trying to get a fire investigation task force together so that could respond in initially southwest Kansas, but now Hays is wanting to get involved too. So it'll be Liberal, Garden City, Dog City, Ford County, and Hays. It's just so if they get a fire, an explosion or something of that nature, and they can't provide the investigation on their own, where we can go out and assist them with that. Or the same thing goes for here. If we get something big, they can help us with that as well.
Okay. Was this, how enjoyable was this to put together? I would think that something like this would be pretty fun. I mean, as far as like working with the other departments and having conversation about how anybody would work together within county overlapping areas and...
Oh, it hasn't been too bad for us, actually. The guys in Garden City have taken care of pretty much everything, so.
We've started relationship building with these bigger city departments and sharing resources and search and rescue and hazard materials and now investigations because those are all specialty fields and it's hard to fill those positions.
Sure.
So being able to work together with the three largest communities in southwest Kansas is going to be a benefit to everybody.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Ford County Fire Investigation Task Force contract.
I'd second that. With the motion seconded, any further discussion on it? Hearing done, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item we have is human resources health insurance benefits.
Good afternoon. We received our health insurance plan renewal. We did get a $287,000 increase in the amount of that renewal. So my first question is, how would the commission like to distribute that increase? And then, of course, I'll answer any questions that you might have for me.
How much of this was on stop loss, Pat?
Okay, I asked for some details from IMA. And most of the increase was stop loss. We have three high claimant, high cost claimants. Two of them were in the, what I call the catastrophic, extremely high. One of the claimants, the medication for the condition makes up 33% of our prescription cost as well. So thankfully, we have that coverage, but it did increase. And when they looked at it, looked at our risk, they're pretty sure that our three high cost claimants will move forward through this next plan year. So, um, let's see. So that was the largest factor in our renewal. But also, there's something they call medical inflation that doesn't follow consumer inflation. And some of the factors in that is through the consolidation of hospitals. Hospital costs are expected to rise. And medical, or medications are expected to rise. So we're just experiencing a lot of inflation costs that is different from before. Also cited in the inflation is the growth of enrollment in Medicare and Medicaid. Boomers are aging into the Medicare age and the state expansion of Medicaid. So that's also driven up the cost from the hospitals because somebody has to cover that margin. So the hospitals are putting it back on private payers. Provider utilization, the pandemic has given us the opportunity for more telehealth than ever before. So that makes it easier for people to utilize services. That's another driving cost in increase. So the flip side of that is actually a bit of a blessing. We're self-funded, so if our people take advantage of telehealth or any other thing that gets them those preventative services before it becomes a chronic or a serious condition, then that will keep our claim costs down. The only inflation protection we have is that we're self-funded. And if we don't spend the money on the claims, we retain them versus paying them all to carriers. So it's, I can't say it enough. It is so important for people to really take care of themselves. Utilization, the specialty meds, they're prescribing the specialty meds for more conditions than they were originally designed for or formulated for. So that raises the price of those as well because that one expensive drug can treat more things.
So, Pat, do we have options that you're wanting us to look at?
Yeah, I'm, like I said, I was just asking if you had any thoughts or ideas on how you wanted to distribute that increase. We, when I say we, Molly and I and IMA had, we've had several meetings and we've looked at different strategies. The two options that we felt would have the least negative impact to both the county and the employees would be to increase the stop loss to $75,000. It's currently 50 now. So what that means is the county would pay the first $75,000 on every member, every employee independent. So that brings that stop loss premium down a bit. And then 75% of our employees do not meet their deductible. So another cost savings would be if we increased the deductible $500, that, that would share some of the increased cost and the inflation to the employees, but only the ones that are utilizing it. So in other words, if you use it, you would experience more cost, but the 75% of our employees that don't wouldn't have to have a premium increase because they're not using it anyway. The upside down number for the $75,000 stop loss increase would be seven. If we hit seven members that went over $75,000 in claim cost next year, that would start impacting that decision. Historically, the most we've ever had is 4.4. So looking at the breakdown, those three high claimants were over, but then there wasn't anyone close after that. So.
On that particular aspect of it, Pat, I want us to pay close attention. If we end up doing that, that next year, that the, that the inflation that we're seeing doesn't bring those, those that are a long ways away from that threshold now, doesn't start bringing those closer into that, into that threshold. So that, so that we're not tipped over that edge because of inflation.
Yes.
So, and as far as the other, the other, maybe you have more there. Maybe I shouldn't let you finish. Go ahead.
Really, that's all I had. So the report that we have in our plan so far, and it's only through the end of January, there were seven members that went over the 25,000 mark. So the low end of the seven was 36,000. And then, so with that inflation factor, I can see we might get one more person if everything stayed the same, hit that 75 if we add that inflation, 12% inflation.
But we're currently at 25 or we're currently at 50?
We're currently at 50. So this is just saying who's, you know, who potentially by the end of the plan year could hit that 50. So there could be seven.
Okay.
But if we make that change, all seven would need to hit that 75. And I only see if everything trends the same, maybe four. So I still feel like that's a safe option for us. Because of the cost savings, the difference between the 50,000 stop loss and the 75,000 stop loss is significant.
Okay.
So that's kind of my county's part of taking the increase versus and the...
Self-insurance.
Yeah. So the county's part of that, our plan increase, and then the employees' part for the, those that utilize it. So the other important thing that I should mention is part of the option that I'm presenting increases the emergency room visit to a $250 copay instead of $100 copay. That only impacts people that go to the emergency room when it's not emergent. So in other words, because it's convenient to go to the ER on Saturday night, you pay a $250 convenience charge versus you should have went to the doctor the week before for waiting.
And it's a true emergency.
If it's a true emergency, you do not have to pay the $250.
And we still have the non-emergency rooms here, like there's...
There's an urgent care.
Right.
I'm not positive what their hours are, but they have expanded hours. I think it's been very helpful. But yeah, if your kiddo falls off their bike, it gashes their head open, go to the emergency room. But if you had a bellyache for a week or two, that's, you're going to pay the convenience.
In your estimation, Pat, are we, if we were to take these steps here, are we proportional to what our increases have been due to inflation? Do you understand what I'm saying? I'm asking, I'm asking that the employees participate in helping pay for the portion that's, that's being increased because of inflation and not because of claim stop loss costs that have been occurred by a couple of our fellow employees?
Yes.
And I'm wondering if that, if what we're talking about with, with those numbers there were proportional to that.
Yes. If someone, they can check my math, if someone has a calculator available and they want to let me know what percentage of the 287 is 155.8? Not one of those numbers.
About 54%.
So... Because what I'm going for is the difference in the amount that they budgeted cost for this. Apologize. I'm not seeing a breakout in that cost.
155.8 or whatever that was that you just mentioned would be what we were able to get our premium down to by making those steps.
That's the annual premium, this difference for the stop loss only.
Okay.
So I don't know if I'm, if I'm thinking right on how to do that math. But in answer to your question, I feel yes, that's, that's very fair. That's going to address those inflation costs without penalizing.
Cause the least amount of pain?
Yes. Yes. Because what we discovered when we did the data is the, the most negative impact that we could have obviously is raising premium. But then if we tried to mess with our prescription plan this year, in order to get any cost savings at all, it was going to have a really negative impact on the people who needed the medications. And the last thing we want to do is have people go off the medications because they're too expensive, they're expensive enough, and then create a chronic or a critical one. So I do not recommend that. Yes, drugs are expensive, but gosh, we really need to keep them affordable.
And then we have also some reserves that will become available to us as well to help offset the, the rest of the increased premium. Is that?
So yes, we have some.
We just don't know how much yet.
We have some cash reserves and I'll know better when the plan year runs out. But because we're running over expected, we're actually going to use some of those reserves to pay claims for this plan year because it is pricier than we thought. But then yes, so anything that we don't spend in, in claims for this renewal year will add to those reserves. But if we have another horrible year, we still have them. So I wouldn't be asking you to cover our medical expenses out of a different fund. And then yes, so you know, if you chose, we have about 800,000 in there. I'm going to anticipate that that's for holding up at the end of the plan year. The auditors like us to keep a year's worth of claim expectations in there, which would be about 1.6. So we're down just a bit, but not really enough to worry about right now. He expressly said no need to let it get over 2 million. So I fluctuate that in the case of if it gets, if we hit 2 million, then I'm backing off. I'm not putting as much money in those reserves just to maintain them. And I might add that they did, they did.
The insurance.
They did market our plan. And let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight, other than Blue Cross Blue Shield. And several weren't competitive and some would not even return a bid because of our high risk, our high exposure risk. They just didn't want to touch us.
What's a 450K laser?
They want to, and I need to get some clarification, but they might be actually wanting to put that on two of our claimants.
I got you.
So we'd have to pay 450,000. One for sure, they were talking about one, two, or possibly three with the different lasers. But I guarantee you it'd be 450,000 on one, which makes no sense for us.
Right, right. So it seems like we're renewing with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas.
Yes.
And we know administration cost is going to go down, the stop loss is going to go up. So we were trying to figure out a way to spring the stop loss by going from 50 to 75.
Just to drop that premium in the hope that, that again, we'll be saving money.
Right.
And ahead of the game, as long as we don't hit seven people with 75,000, which is where their claims.
Typically, we have 4.4.
That's the most we could ever have.
Most we've ever had.
Usually we're on two or three.
Okay. Anything else on there we can tweak?
Really, the only other cost savings would be changing our RX. And there was a few employees that would have what's called a disruption where the new network wouldn't cover drugs that are currently covered. But the biggest thing was going from our co-insurance model that we have now to a $15 copay. So for example, if you currently have a maintenance med that when you go get a 30-day fill is costing you $2, it would go to 15.
Okay.
And that would be per month, per fill. And I'm just afraid people won't. For the, for the amount, the small amount that we would save in the plan cost, I think we would drive people to be sick.
You know, that doesn't sound like all that big of an increase. But if you're talking about somebody that's got three or four of those that they go get every month, now you're talking about 60 bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah. On the backside, I mean, this is, this is a tough year. This is a tough year. On the backside, we're doing a lot of education. We have a lot of supplementals that are reaching out to our employees, offering them options on maybe some different things that would be quite so pricey, reducing the number of meds. Some of our employees are on medications that actually work against each other. So they have to take a med to counteract what the other med's doing and. So we're really working, of course, their doctor is the only one that can change it. But we're really working on, on education and helping the employees save money on the backside as well, in turn, hopefully saving money.
So today, Pat, you're not really looking for action here. You're looking for some guidance on.
Today, I would appreciate action on the renewal. So if you wanted to follow my recommendations, not the employee contributions, but I would like to get approval on the renewal because we're going to need to get contracts approved and drawn up and looked at. We've been doing this in May. But obviously, if you're not ready to do that, we would have the first meeting in May. But I can guarantee you the numbers aren't going to go down.
Other, other options are going to be, we were going to have one here, doesn't that look like?
We've really worked, IMAs work really hard. They know how we hate getting these numbers.
Yeah, I got to tell you, I really, I know this year I haven't spoke to them at all, but I know you have, and I just got to tell you, they are professional. And when they shop it, I mean, they're, they're getting in the grit of it all.
And they're really brutal on negotiating. They've gotten Blue Cross to come down on things in the past, but our high claims don't lie.
Right. And I think that's what I mean by the grit. I mean, they're, they're people that, they, they fight for it. And they, they want it, they want us to see that reduction. You know, and, you know, what's, what's always amazed me is with, kind of as, as big as this has become, you know, for the county, that there hasn't become sort of a nutrition plan. You know, where people actually start seeing maybe what intake they actually have into their body, which maybe requires drugs to get out of their body. It's amazing. I mean, the stuff, I mean, this illness comes from what we eat too.
Yeah. Most of it. And I'm glad you said that. Care to Thrive now has nutritional counseling available.
There we go.
And I believe New Directions, our EAP does as well. Blue Cross has some courses and support people that you can reach out and they do accountability, they give you resources, and they have education and programs too.
Yeah.
That is no cost. And they send you stuff like resistance bands and things to help you with your wellness, depending on the topic that you pick. So we do, it's, like I said, Molly and I are really working hard doing lunch and learns and education opportunities, letting our employees know what they have to help them be successful on the wellness side as well.
Yeah. That's good. Mr. Tasset, is there anything you want to put in? I mean, it seems like the stop loss is 75.
I would agree, that's a safe option. Emergency room visits from 100 to 250. I mean, again, as a safe option, I think that's where the lunch and learns come in probably. Four, letting people understand maybe scenarios of when to go to urgent care versus emergency room care, when to visit their doctors during the week, plan that. Conversations.
And I got to, just to make sure that I understand this for sure, Pat, you need a, you need a motion from us to, to go ahead with renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield today, right? And that stuff that we've talked about as far as raising our stop loss and, and the copay for, those, those kind of things can still be negotiated after we make this motion. Is that right? Or is this all part of that?
This is part of the renewal, the stop loss, the out-of-pocket, the deductible, the emergency room copay, that's all part of the renewal plan. It's an option would be built into the contract. So I would like to have that today.
Just clarification on.
But we can, you can take a look, or we can look at the employee contributions, the premium amounts, high deductible, low deductible, the amounts that families pay, if you want to, later. But today, like I said, I would appreciate if you, if you want to go with the renewal or that you decide which option you want to go with on the renewal so that we have time to get the contracts to plan.
All right, we had, so we had $75,000 stop loss, right?
Yep.
That we were going to be from 50 to 75.
Emergency room deductible.
ER deductible up to 250.
From 100.
And what was the other?
The deductible, each level of deductible.
Oh yeah, raising the, raising the individual deductible to 500.
It would be individual 500 and death dependence 500. So each deductible tier would go up on the low deductible plan only. High deductible will stay the same.
Right. What's the current deductible?
500.
Family?
So it's, the deductible is currently 500 and 1,000.
Okay, and 1,000.
Mm-hmm. And then the maximum out-of-pocket is 1,500, 3,000. So 1,500 is max out-of-pocket for a medical, a single.
Okay.
And 3,000 for a family.
Okay. And what would it go to?
It would go to 1,000 and 2,000, I've got to remember my math.
Okay.
And then the maximum out-of-pocket would go to 2,000.
Four.
And for the single and 3, 500, what did I say?
I don't know.
I got it. It's in here. Okay, so the deductible would go 1,000, 1,500.
1,500, there we go.
Yeah. And then the co-insurance maximum out-of-pocket would go 1,500, 2,500. So then you have to remember, they weren't funny. So it'd be a total maximum out-of-pocket would be 2,500, the deductible plus the co-insurance per person and 4,000 for the family.
Okay.
And then after that, the plan would pick up 100%.
Yeah.
The high deductible, the qualified high deductible plan would stay the same on all tiers.
And if we did all of these, you're still at that 14.3% increase?
It would, so.
No, okay. So that, that's before.
It would reduce it down. The 14% increase was no changes.
Got it.
Plan was identical.
Okay.
This actually drops it down to like an eight.
Okay.
7.9.
Okay.
Basically would take that 155.6 away.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal with the three options that we presented here, moving to a $75,000 stop loss cap. Moving the ER copay to 250. And showing a $500 increase to the deductible.
Okay. And I'll second that. I would the motion second. Any discussion on the commission side?
I have without words.
Okay.
And that's very rare.
All right. I don't, I don't like it.
Right.
You don't like it, I hate it.
I don't like it at all and I share with the employee. And I'm sorry, I don't, I don't like this, but. But I guess what I'm trying to achieve is, is that we're all sharing in the, in the inflation part of it at least. And that, and safeguard from the, from the big claims that, that we've had there. Because everybody's feeling the inflation side of it.
On everything.
On everything.
Okay, so. No further discussion. I'll go ahead and call a vote on this. All those in favor, aye? Opposed? Katie, are you still there?
I understand your voting.
Okay. All right. Moving on.
Next item we have is communications.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Kansas Department of Transportation utility statement.
How about following that one?
What's that?
How about following that?
Oh, this is easy. This item is for our backhaul that we pay from the KOD site back to the radio core.
Oh, okay.
It's a previous year's invoice. They bill us for the prior year. And it's budgeted item.
Yeah. Did they ever tell you how they figure out this dollar amount?
I have an answer for you. It's a little long.
Yeah?
It goes back to what AT&amp;T billed, I want to say about 15 years ago for a T1 circuit. And all of the radio sites are designed and require two T1 circuits.
Okay.
And one goes up and one comes back. And so they only bill us for the equivalent of one T1 circuit up and one back. They pay a heck of a lot more.
Oh, yeah.
Because if, if that was on their microwave, there was a non-compete clause. Now they've installed fiber from here all the way to the core. They've actually put fiber in all across the southern core and the northern core, so there's two big problems. So they're paying a significantly higher amount than what was reflected on our bill. But that's, they agreed upon enough, so that's what they bill us.
There we go. Gentlemen, I make a motion to approve the annual utility bill from KDOT for the T1 line usage charges.
I accept that motion.
All right, if we have a motion seconded, any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Elliot.
Next item, priority dispatch, communications.
This is a licensing and disrenewal of service for our existing protocol system. Nothing's changed. This is just ongoing maintenance.
I make a motion to approve the invoice from Priority Dispatch Systems License, license renewal service and support.
I second that.
All right, I'll call that for a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Plating Exoning Board.
Good afternoon.
Hey, good afternoon.
I've got a few findings to discuss. The first one is Julie Chris Holmes Curbs is requesting another three-year extension of her services on the Ford County zoning board. Share, her term expires June 20th, second of this year, and she'd like to serve another three years. I'm asking that you guys extend her service.
And make a motion to approve the three-year term extension on the Ford County zoning board for for your spirits.
I second the bid. I mean that motion.
All right, we got a motion seconded. I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Now, John Mullen and Josie Licks, Licks have both requested to retire from the zoning board. Josie has served on the board since 2003 and John since 2004. I'm requir- requesting that the board accept the resignations.
All right, I'd make a motion to approve the reservation, resignations of Mr. John R. Mullen and Mrs. Josie Licks from the Ford County zoning board. Their terms expire June?
June 26th.
20th second of 2022. I'd make that motion.
I second it.
All right, with motion seconded, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And now I'm requesting that I be able to declare the two vacancies on the zoning board and that I place a notice in the Dodge City Gilly Club. And so if the board can remain compliant with zoning regulations, the positions will need to be filled by people living in the unincorporated area of the Ford County zoning board.
And where is that?
That is anywhere that's not in the city limits of Spearville Ford. But we have, we have to have, according to our zoning regulations, three people in the unincorporated area and two people in the incorporated areas.
Okay. Is there a buffer zone around the towns at all?
No.
Okay, so it's just as long as you're not in city limits?
As long as you're not in city limits.
Make a motion to declare two available positions on the Ford County zoning board.
I'll second that. With motion seconded, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have Health Department COVID-19 update.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Hi, Angela.
Hello. Um, I would just like to provide you an update on the status of the pandemic and kind of what we're transitioning to. Instead of it being termed pandemic, it's going to go to endemic. So it will be treated more like the seasonal flu, you know, or the annual flu as far as when we do, um, you know, the tracing and the investigation. There's about six key points, um, that the status will affect, but the, the primary ones for us is vaccinations. Um, we're still going to provide vaccinations and we will still receive those free of charge from the state of Kansas. So we will still do that. Same with the testing. We will still be testing, um, at the Health Department free of charge for anybody, for both of these. You don't have to be a resident of Ford County for any of this. Um, we will still, um, you know, monitor people because we are still monitoring some, you know, that have long-term COVID. So we will still continue on with that and make the rich rules and, you know, follow up on our treatment plans and help them out the best we can. So that's just, just a quick update on kind of where we, we stand with that, so. You have any questions? Okay, that's all I have today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Kansas Association of Counties special election. In January, the KAC hosted a special election to allow the Kansas County Human Resource Association to transition from an associate member of the KAC to an affiliate member. The election failed. They're asking for additional votes, same question. Shall the Kansas County Human Resource Association be admitted to the Kansas Association of Counties as an affiliate member consistent with Article 5 of the Kansas Association of Counties bylaws? As admitted October 19th, 2021.
The voting members were Sean Tasset or JD or Brenda at that time. So do you choose to vote yes or no? Only assigned five votes.
Okay. Did it say why it failed?
There was not enough votes that came in.
Okay.
The minimum was 53 votes cast, according to the bylaws.
Out of 105?
It was emailed, sent email.
Yeah.
Email, I guess, was. I did respond to it. I'd be curious, like an I V O that's sticking.
Part of the minority.
I'd like to know how broke down out of the 53 that did respond, I would say.
I don't count those votes. And it might hurt my feelings.
So you just need me to fill that out then?
Yeah. And then I'll send it in.
Is there really anything we need to do on this? I mean, we, we're just redoing something we did before. Okay. Okay. Move on.
Next item, upcoming meetings. Kansas County Highway Association Spring Conference. Dodge City, Kansas, May 16th through the 18th. Community Facility Advisory Board, CFAB Zoom meeting, 6:30 PM, Tuesday, April 21st. Kansas County Commission Association Spring Conference, April 26th through 28th in Salina. Kansas Association of City County Managers Spring Conference, April 28th and 29th. Special budget work sessions coming up. May 2nd, 2022, starting at 2 PM for fiscal year 2023 budget, beginning of outside requests. May 11th, starting at 8:30 AM, Ford County Department heads. May 16th, starting at 2 PM, remaining outside requests. Wick. I have a please clarification here on CFAB, I think. You don't have a Tuesday, April 21st of this year. Is it supposed to be May? Huh? Is it supposed to be? Is it supposed to be in May? It's coming up.
I think it's Thursday, I think, the 21st. It's also Zoom, isn't it?
Yeah, we do have a Zoom coming up.
21st, Thursday?
Thursday, instead of Tuesday. Yes, Thursday. That would be Thursday.
Okay. All right, so last on the agenda here is an executive session for a personal matter of a non-elected personnel. So I'd like to move the board to recess into an executive session to discuss employee evaluation pursuant to the personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B1. The open meeting to resume in this location. Do we need, you have 15?
I'd say 15 minutes.
Okay. So why don't we go with 450? Does that work?
Should be 455. You have a few minutes to clear the room here.
Okay, so 455. And in addition to the commissioners, the county administrator, assistant county administrator, county counselor, human resources director, Pat Hecky, and human resources specialist, Molly Gleason should be included in the executive session. So I'd make that motion.
I'd second.
Okay, we have motion seconded. I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're back out of executive session. And, uh, last thing we have is adjournment.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that. Motion seconded, we'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.